Mm-hmm.
Oops.
You're sick. He's very sick.
Well, no, you can sit down.
When do you do that executive session thing?
At the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Big move?
He's ready. He's ready.
Good evening. We'll start the meeting, regular meeting of City Council, on Tuesday, October 6th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Clark. Mayor Protem Mulvey.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Austin Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Trillo.
Here.
And council, just for the record, Mayor Clark is very ill tonight, and that's why he's not in attendance.
Thank you. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have the minutes of a special meeting of September 8th.
Councilman Mulvey, could I comment just on the agenda real quick?
Yes, sir.
But just on, for your agenda, just one minor correction. When you get to item 7E, which is on your consent agenda, staff is recommending, the council communication says to set the public hearing for November 3rd, but we're recommending that that public hearing be set for October 20th. So if you could just make that notation.
7B.
7E.
7E.
Yes, sir, that's the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code. We believe that you can look at both of that and the building codes on the same night and kind of get all that taken care of. So, just a minor correction, just so that you know when you get to that, we've changed the recommended hearing date on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we have the minutes of a special meeting of September 8th, 2009. Minutes of the special meeting of September 9th, 2009.
I have one correction. In line 18, approve is spelled wrong. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The meeting of a special meeting, minutes of special meeting, September 10th.
I believe there's a correction for the motion that's on the page 3, starting line 60. I believe line 62, 63 should be to move the entire amount of the water fund as of December 31, 2009 to special projects.
I'll have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as?
To move.
Second.
Moved in second. May I get a vote? Read this, thank you.
Vote is five in favor, but I think probably, there you go, thank you. Six in favor, the motion's approved.
Well, then, city manager, have any new?
Not tonight, sir. No, sir.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a guest citizen that we want to recognize, Margene Hamilton. If she'd come up to the podium, please. This evening, Littleton City Council is pleased to recognize Margene Hamilton as guest citizen. Margene is administrative coordinator at the Littleton Museum and has announced her plans to retire October 31st. While it is not the city's practice to recognize retiring employees as guest citizens, the request to recognize Margene came from Littleton citizens who have worked with her and volunteered their time at the museum for many years. As museum director Tim notes, wrote recently in a newsletter to volunteers, in her 12 years here, Margene has been the most public presence in a very public institution. Hers is the first voice you hear when you call. Hers is often the first face that visitors, volunteers, and staff see when they come here. I can't think of a better first impression for the city and the museum. When we moved into our new building five years ago, Margene willingly took on two huge new responsibilities. She offered to manage the museum store, a first-ever effort for the museum and for her, and she turned it into one of the best in the business. She also volunteered to be the volunteer coordinator, and in doing that, she took responsibility for the museum's most valuable assets, its volunteers. Through all her duties, both old and new, Margene has done her job and done it well, with a smile, a laugh, a warm personality, and an ability to rise to any challenge. Maybe the best thing I can say about her is that I've never met anyone who doesn't genuinely like her. Margene and her husband plan to spend more time visiting their grown sons and their family in Texas, and are especially looking forward to spoiling their three grandsons. She said she enjoyed the people, the variety that came with her job, and is pleased with the success of the museum store. The city council wishes Margene Hamilton and her family the very best following her well-deserved retirement, and hopes she comes back to visit us often.
Mayor, just to save you a trip down here, we've got a certificate of appreciation and a memento from Margene from the city.
And also the plaque?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. It's been a joy to work at the museum for the last 12 years. As I know all of you know, it's a special place, and I have enjoyed working there, and I do plan to come back, so I'm not going to be leaving town completely. So I will be back for some events. Thank you very much.
Also, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can say, I think she'll do a great job of spoiling those grandchildren.
I'll bet she will. Under scheduled public appearances tonight, we have Mr. Bruce Stallman, Littleton Historic Preservation Award.
Thank you. Bruce Stallman, 6192 South Aberdeen Street in Littleton, representing the City of Littleton Historical Preservation Board. On behalf of Historic Littleton, Inc., and Historic Preservation Board, it is my honor this evening to present to Mayor Protem Mulvey, on behalf of Mayor Clark and council, the 2009 Historic Preservation Award of stewardship to the City of Littleton for its long-term care of the Town Hall Building. This award was originally presented at the Historic Littleton, Inc. annual meeting on September 10th, which unfortunately resulted in a schedule conflict with council's budget deliberation session. As a result, Historic Littleton, Inc., and the Historical Preservation Board felt tonight's public acknowledgement of the community's appreciation for your considerable efforts was wholly appropriate. Designated by the City of Littleton as a local landmark in 1972, and with listings on the State and National Register of Historic Places, there may be no building more deserving of this award than our distinguished Town Hall. Today, it's the place in Littleton where we go to see great theater productions by the Town Hall Arts Center, and it's one of Main Street's architectural gems. The building was originally designed by J.J.B. Benedict in 1920. The flamboyant Benedict is considered one of the great architects of the American West, and was renowned for his period architecture and fine attention to detail. After completing the design for the Carnegie Library in 1916, which of course is today the Melting Pot Restaurant, he was commissioned by the town to design a multipurpose building with a dominating facade that expressed Littleton's development over the prior 60 years. According to Benedict, the features which he designed suggested aspiration, purpose, and action. The result was a building in the Italian Renaissance Revival style that features terracotta facade, small-scale ornamentation, decorative cast iron, roof tiles, and an arched window design. The pointed lancet arches of the first floor form an arcade which served as a bay for the city's first fire truck. At the time, the building was recognized as one of the most notable Town Halls among towns across the nation. And just as an aside, if you go into the building today, you'll note that the entryway slopes up, which was an original feature of the building, the slanted floor, and it was designed that way so that when they washed the fire truck, the water would run out onto the street. Over the years, significant remodeling has occurred on the interior to accommodate its use as a performing arts center, but the facade remains largely the same with only minor modifications. In 1920, Benedict and local residents said it would last for 50 years, and today, at 87 years young, it is meticulously preserved and continues to serve the community. The Historic Preservation Awards are an annual event sponsored by Historic Littleton, Inc., and the Historical Preservation Board, for the purpose of recognizing exceptional achievement within the field of historic preservation. It's my pleasure and privilege to recognize the city's commitment to the ongoing maintenance and safeguarding of this building. Specifically, I wish to acknowledge the city's maintenance team, including Supervisor Dave Stacy, and maintenance workers Joel Fisher, Ray Dodson, Pablo Mendoza, and Michael Ko for their outstanding efforts. Mayor Protem Mulvey, Mayor Clark, and distinguished council members, congratulations and thank you for your dedication to preserving Historic Littleton.
You had city officers in there, didn't you, Jim?
I think Charlie was in there.
Charlie, Charlie's been everywhere. That's true. Now, we're up to unscheduled public appearances, which we limit to four minutes if we may, and an opportunity for any citizen to express opinions or ask questions regarding city services, council policies, or other matters of community concern that are not part of the scheduled agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to come up tonight? Wow.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do have a...
Dr. Cole?
I have an email I'd like to read. I've already talked to Charlie Bloston about this, so the issue will be taken care of, but quite a few people have had concerns about the detour at Windermere and Cayley, and so I want to read this email. Subject: Cars Speeding Around Corner at Windermere and Fair. I don't get off work in time to attend city council meeting tonight, and I was wondering if you could bring up my concern at the meeting. There's construction going on near Stern and Cayley, and a detour is set up on Windermere, turning east at Windermere and Fair, including an oversized speed limit sign indicating that the speed on fair is to be 25 miles per hour. My house is on the corner of Windermere and Fair, and my husband and I have been outside watching cars turn onto fair this afternoon, and the majority of people really seem to be speeding up the hill, fair, on the detour, and a few cars even squealed their tires around the corner. There are several small children living right here on this street, right where the cars are turning, and we would feel safer if something could be done about this. They seem to be traveling awfully fast around that corner and not watching what they are doing. Thank you for your help on this. I appreciate your efforts on our behalf. Well, the efforts, of course, are Charlie's. He's going to see that this is taken care of, and I will get this to him, but I know there are six children in just one house near that corner, and I think the person who wrote this has several of her own, and there may be some others on the street, so it is an issue. But Charlie, I'll get it to you.
Excuse me, Dr. Cole, do we know who wrote the email?
Yeah, you'd like me to probably read that into the record, sorry.
Thank you.
This was from Melissa, uh-oh, I'll spell it, N-A-V-R-K-A-L, at 6200 South Windermere Street, Littleton, Colorado, 80120. Did you get that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into the consent agenda items, which are, any items can be adopted by, consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinance and resolutions must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion, and any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. 7A is an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2009 International Code and re-adopting the 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, International Energy Conservation Code, and Standards relating to the Installation Inspection of Conveniences. And the city is currently enforcing the 2006 International Code. Would you like to read the ordinance, please?
I would, and just for the record...
"Not sure like" is the right term on that, Mayor, but I think...
I did not write this title. This is an ordinance for the City of Littleton, Colorado, adopting the International Code Council's 2009 International Building Code, the 2009 International Residential Code, the 2009 Mechanical Code, 2009 Plumbing Code, 2009 International Fuel/Gas Code, 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, the International Conference of Building Officials 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, American National Standard Institute, American Society of Mechanical Engineers A1712007, American Society of Mechanical Engineers A1732005, American Society of Mechanical Engineers A18.12005, Safety Code for Elevators and Escalators, with amendments and all appendancies thereto, providing for penalties for violations thereto, adopting amendments and providing notice that copies thereof are available for inspection at the Office of the Codes and Inspection Division.
Gee, that cleared out a lot of people.
I know. I was going to warn anyone who was left.
All righty. And we have 7B.
And just for the record, Mr. Mulvey, a public hearing on that will be October 20th.
October 20th on that one?
Yes, sir.
7B is an ordinance on first reading, amending city code sections 10-12 and 10-82C, and adding section 10-415 related to small wind energy systems, which is, in order to simplify the review process for small wind energy systems, small wind turbines, and thus allow individual wishing to install a small wind energy system, to do so more easily and inexpensively, city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance that will permit small wind energy systems as an accessory use in commercial and residential zone districts. Do you have something to say on that?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending city code sections 10-1-2 and 10-8-2C, and adding section 10-4-15 related to small wind energy systems.
Thank you. And 7C is an ordinance on first reading, amending the 2009 budget to transfer funds from the Water Utility Fund to the Special Projects Fund. And during the 2010 proposed budget study session on September 10th, city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to transfer the balance of the Water Utility Fund as of December 31st, 2009, to the Special Projects Fund, as well as transfer an estimated $368,000 interest earnings to the General Fund in 2009. As of August 31st, the Water Utility Fund had a fund balance of $11,210,923.60. Would you like to read that ordinance?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending ordinance number 18, series of 2008, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton Counties of Arapahoe, Jefferson, and Douglas, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2009, and ending December 31, 2009, and repealing Title VII, Chapter VI Water Utility Account of the City of Littleton Municipal Code.
And that's also an October 20th hearing date.
Thank you. And we have an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2010 sanitary sewer utility During the 2010 proposed budget deliberations, the city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance, amending the annual sewer charges for council considerations. Council also directed $7 million cash balance in order to meet bond requirements and future capital needs. Would you read that ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending provisions of the city code regarding wastewater fees.
On 7E, there's an ordinance on first reading the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code with appendices. And this ordinance would adopt the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code, and with all the amendments, and would you like to read that, please?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, adopting the International Fire Code with certain appendices, 2009 edition, as published by the International Code Council, Inc., adopting certain amendments thereto, and providing for a copy of said code to be available for inspection at the Office of the City Clerk.
And we've recommended October 20th for that public hearing also.
Really? I got down November 3rd on that one.
Yeah, no, sir, that's...
That's the one you...
Yes, sir, that's the one we're suggesting be moved to October 20th.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Is moved in second. Have any discussion on it? Then we may vote. Like I already did.
Vote is six in favor, the motion's approved.
The second and final reading and ordinance and public hearing, I get my big chance when we don't have any second and time.
No, sir.
I want to go to general business. And a motion to appoint Jim Taylor to the CML League Policy Committee for 2009 and 2010, could you tell us a little bit about that, please?
The Colorado Municipal League has a policy committee that is, has a representative from each of the 270 municipalities within the state. Each municipality is allowed to send one person to the policy committee, except for very large cities, when you get above a certain population, you're allowed to have two representatives. Phil and I, Phil Cortese and I, both have been on this policy committee in the past. It meets three times a year. Once is during the Municipal League Annual Conference in June, and once in the fall, and once in the spring. And it primarily, its primary function is to review potential legislation that's coming out of the State House, and assess its impacts upon the municipalities of the state, and take a position, or no position, on certain pieces of legislation. So the workshops, when we do meet in the fall and spring, is full-day workshops, begins about 8:00 in the morning, and we'll go until we finish in the afternoon, sometimes 4:00, sometimes 5:00, sometimes 3:00, so it's an all-day-long meeting twice a year.
You must get big paid to go through all that.
I do. I get a lot of pay for going down there and doing that.
Do we need to have a vote on that, a motion to appoint you?
Yes, sir, you do.
I move that we appoint Jim Taylor to the CML Policy Committee for 2009, 2010.
Second.
Has been approved and seconded to a vote?
Vote is six in favor, the motion's approved.
Now, we're going to have a little discussion on the community room sound system, which has been a little mixed up. And Kelly Nardi, please.
Kelly had sent this out to council in your packets, and Dr. Cole had requested that it be on the agenda tonight for council discussion. Kelly can just go over the highlights, I think, for the audience.
Good evening, council. I was out of town, maybe I shrunk. I was out of town last week when SEFCO did submit a proposal, so I wasn't with them when they put this proposal together. I guess I would ask if you have any questions about the proposals, but also taking into consideration, I'm not a sound engineer either.
Is National Speaker and SEFCO the only two agencies in the metropolitan area that can provide this type of service?
I'm sure there are others, but we've had a long history with National Speaker. The president of National Speaker is still there, and he was there when this building was built, and this original sound system, a lot of it is still in place, so we've had a lot of experience with them over the sound system in this room. And then, we primarily use SEFCO for most of the audiovisual stuff, because they are the, as far as I know, they're the biggest audiovisual vendor in Denver, but I'm sure there may be others.
He put in this one, though.
National Speaker did this one, and SEFCO did the one in the community room. And they did the one in the community room at the same time we installed all that equipment, so it was a big package of all the cameras and everything else we installed in that room, so as far as we were concerned, from a project management point of view, it made sense to use one vendor.
On the bid from National Speaker, I'm trying to read what they are describing here. When they talk about a UHF handheld wireless, is that the type of microphone we use for the citizens' forums?
Yes. That's a good... We don't have any of that kind of microphone for the community room. We have it for this room, but it can't go back and forth. This is a completely separate system than the one in there. But yes, it's just like that.
So will we have, it indicates here, as I read it, only one of those handheld devices. When we are in this room, we need more than one, and so I'm curious as to why there was only one for in there. Is that all you anticipate we'd ever need?
I thought I saw three somewhere.
Usually, only one person speaking at a time. What we have for this room, though, is the handheld one, and then we have the clip-on one. It's called a lavalier, and it clips on.
Right.
So if you're going to be doing a presentation, and you want your hands to be free, then you wear the lavalier clip-on, but if you're doing something where we're going around into the audience, you want that handheld one so you can give it to people.
Also, on this bid from National Speaker, how reliable is that system?
You know, all I can tell you is, a lot of this, I don't know if Tom can concur with this based on his career in broadcasting, but sometimes you don't know till it gets installed. And when we bought the system in the community room, it was presented to us as a state-of-the-art system, and I believe that it is a state-of-the-art system, but after trial and error, it probably wasn't the right system for that room, because those mics pick up sound in a 360-degree radius, and the mics are on all the time. This proposal would be mics that are essentially off, so they're not picking up any ancillary noise in the room, people coughing, papers being shuffled, so they only come on as you come up to the mic and speak into it. And so it would reduce, this kind of system would reduce some of the background noise, but the reason, part of the reason we picked that one, it was a completely wireless system, and that's the only, still, it's the only completely wireless system. I have to point out that this wireless system is going to use batteries, and we're going to go through a lot of batteries.
For National Speaker?
Mm-hmm.
It also said the same thing with the SEFCO bid as well.
They're both going to use batteries.
Both going to use a lot.
Unless you go with the less expensive option that SEFCO presented, which is a hardwired system, which I would not recommend, because that room is used on a daily basis. It's booked constantly with various meetings, and that would mean we'd have a box on the floor, and it would have cables coming out of it. If we had 12 mics, there'd be 12 cables coming out of it. I mean, it would be pretty intrusive, and it would require a bit of setup every time you used it, quite a bit more setup than we're doing now.
I would agree that that would be a wired system... I would agree that that would be, a wired system is not what that room needs. I have, I guess, two other comments. The quote from National Speaker is almost $17,000. And I get just a little irritated when I get a one paragraph memorandum from them that probably has a dozen spelling mistakes in that memo, in that one paragraph.
There are a few.
And that just bothers the dick inside of me. I think it does Dr. Cole, too, but I won't speak for her. But the SEFCO bid, which is over $15,000, but it does not include any electrical work or junction boxes or drilling or anything like this, we've got to also do that. It tells us that it is less, it's more costly than a wired system, and it's less reliable than a wired system. So when you, when I look at the two bids, even though I'm irritated about National Speaker, I think they've got the better bid.
Do you have money in the PEG fee?
Yeah, there's about $17,000, $17,200 in the PEG fund for the remainder of this year.
The PEG fee can only be used for things like this, or for microphones or cameras or something.
And the city attorney may want to chime in, but in my view, the only reason we have that sound system is to televise meetings. We don't use that sound system in there any other time. The staff doesn't use it for any meetings. So in my view, it would be an appropriate expenditure from the PEG fund. But Suzanne may want to say something about that.
No, I agree. I think it'd be appropriate expenditure from the PEG fund. Whether there are other expenditures coming, I don't know.
I don't have any, I have plans for next year, but I don't have plans for this year. But, you know, if something goes south between now and December 31.
I agree with you. Do you have to use a PEG fee by the end of the year, or is that?
No, we don't.
Just wondered. But I agree with this. I think it's nice. I think we should do it.
We didn't spend the PEG fee for about four straight years. And installing all that equipment in there took a big piece of it, and the new document cam took a big piece of it, so. And Granicus and the new video bulletin board system. So we spent about four years' worth of PEG fund in about a year.
Yeah, you did it.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Will they, these mics pick up the way these do so that if somebody turns to speak to somebody down, you know, like we're sitting in the big enclosed tables, and the mayor sits at the end? So if we turn to talk to him, is it going to pick us up okay?
What I'm told by National Speaker is that what would go in there is almost exactly what you have here. It's just powered by a battery instead of electricity.
Okay. And how will the sound for people in the room be?
We talked a little bit about adding some additional speakers in that room. But once again, in my view, I wouldn't see that as an appropriate PEG expenditure because it's not part of the telecast of the meeting. It's more for the benefit of the people in the room. So we did talk a little bit about putting some more speakers in, but that's as far as we went.
Do we have any idea at all of the cost of that?
I have no idea.
So it's not part-
It wouldn't be that much, I wouldn't think, but I don't really know.
Yeah, I really like us to, to look into that. That's not part of this, but I'd like us to solve that problem, too.
Okay.
So we need a motion? We need a motion, right?
I think it'd be ni, preferable, yes, ma'am?
Yeah.
To give Kelly direction on this.
I wouldn't, I mean, you want to try it, or me, too?
I, sure. I will move that the city contract with National Speaker and Sound for their proposal to give us a new sound system in the community room in the bid amount of $16,845.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, John.
Yeah, just one comment. I think we're justified in giving the contract to the higher bidder. It is the lowest and best bid, I think.
Good point.
The National has a tremendous reputation among audio people for developing good systems. I think the system we have here in the council chambers certainly verifies that. And I'm a little disappointed with the system we ended up with in the community room from SEFCO. So I definitely think going with the higher bid is justified. So I'll vote in favor of the motion.
John. Anyone else ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor. The motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And we have a motion approving the 2010 Arapahoe County Community Development Block Grant application. Charlie?
Charlie Bloston, our Public Services Director, will present this item to you.
Good evening, council. I'm going to try and make this interesting, so bear with me for a moment. The federal government has a lot of money, and they're going to share it with some of the local communities. When, by the time it finally gets to Littleton, we end up with about $150,000. Now, for those in the audience says, well, that's not a whole lot of money compared to everything that we have and the money the federal government accumulates. If you turn to the third page of the council communication and the attachment, $150,000 since 1992 when we started this program, we've now accumulated over $3.4 million from this program, the Community Development Block Grant, and spend it on public improvements all over the community. If you turn to the back page of the communication, you'll see a map of part of Littleton that shows where that money can be spent. It can only be spent in neighborhoods that qualify under low and moderate income census tracts. So in the shaded area on the back page of the communication shows the neighborhoods where we can spend the $150,000. In the past few years, council has designated $22,500 of that $150 to go to the doctor's care program as described on the first page of the communication. We are asking council for direction to do that again for the 2010 program. In addition, we would then have $127,500 to do public improvements in the neighborhood that's shown on the back page. Typically, we do curb, gutter, sidewalk, and street paving with this money. Because this application must be turned in to the county and then to the federal government by October 20, and then the award for the program is made in January, and the money is available to us starting sometime in June of 2010, we have to submit the application through council at this meeting. We don't have a specific project in mind for the construction of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and street paving, but that's okay with the application process. We can submit that at a later time, preferably before the end of the year. Typically, the staff goes out and tries to find locations, the streets, where they need attention within these neighborhoods and sidewalks that need to be improved, especially for handicap accessibility. With that less-than-boring presentation and the possibility of collecting $150,000 with very little obligations on a part of the city, I'll ask council if you have any questions.
Charlie, well, I'll address council first. I really think we need to continue putting the $22,500 into doctor's care after losing the clinic at the Buck Center, which was serving low and, and low-income people. I think that we really need to continue funding doctor's care for that reason, if no, none other. And so I'd like to see that happen. Charlie, on your sidewalks, when you do replace sidewalks, are you, you're making them compliant with ADA. Are you making them also wider sidewalks in what generally is existing in-
Yeah, we have to go a minimum of five feet. And typically, we find sidewalks in the area that's shaded on the back page here in that neighborhood, we find sidewalks that are as small as two and a half feet.
I think they are in my neighborhood, too. And I'm not-
We noticed that. It was sidewalks that were installed in the 40s, 50s, and early 60s, very narrow. We have to go in and replace those, put in the handicap ramps, but the minimum sidewalk width is five feet.
I'm assuming that census tracts will be added or deleted after the 2010 census?
It'll probably change at that point, yes, sir. But we still submit for the 2,000 census tracts that are applicable here.
Okay. And because those new tracts are added or deleted, may not occur till 2011, 2012, somewhere in there?
Probably not.
The last one is a question that you may not know the answer to, but my understanding is once the city, if the city gets to be above 50,000 population, we can apply as a direct grantee for these funds instead of having to flow through the county.
That's correct.
Would that, would that give us more than the $150,000?
Probably, yes.
Thank you.
Between now and the census, I don't know if we'll reach that 50,000.
I highly doubt it, but.
Probably.
But it's, I think they accept something besides every 10-year census tracts for that estimation, too, on the 50,000.
Any more questions, Charlie? You feel if anyone would like to make a motion on this?
I'd move for approval.
No, second?
It's been moved in second. Do we have any discussion or vote?
Well, since, since we don't have such detailed minutes now, can we read the whole piece as a motion here?
I move that $22,500 of the City of Littleton's 2010 Arapahoe County Development Block Grant funds be transferred to Integrated Healthcare Initiative, and the council president be authorized to affix his signature to a letter to the county stating this intention that a sidewalk or street project application be approved, and the council be, president be authorized to affix his signature thereto.
Shall we vote?
Vote is six in favor. The motion's approved.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on down to comments and reports. City manager?
No, sir, I don't have any tonight.
The attorney?
I don't have any.
Council members will start with Dr. Cole.
We have two items related to the Colorado Consortium of Performance Measurement and, and Departmental Studies. And I'd like us to put that on a study session, if that's what would be appropriate to talk about. Because I think we, we need, we need to talk about that as opposed to just receive this.
Well, that's, that's council's prerogative. I mean, we sent that out to you as background information, so if council would like to discuss it as a study session, that's council's prerogative.
So that's, I'm requesting if we need others.
Do we need to vote?
Do we, do we need to vote, or you just want-
Well, whether, unless anybody, generally, a council member brings it to the other council, and then you have a discussion about whether you'd like to have it added or not.
Maybe it's because we're ambivalent, Jim. We don't care whether we talk about it or not.
I don't know that it's necessary to be on a priority list for a study session. I think we have some other things that are a little more pending.
We can certainly add it if, and then see, you know, when, when we can schedule it. Council, have any objection to that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this has been going on, well, it initially came out of the ICMA, and then it was adopted by some communities in northern Colorado on a state basis. I think the, it's a little early to really evaluate it. I don't think there's enough history yet to real, to determine how beneficial it is. It's expensive to get into, and I think we're probably better off holding that discussion for another year or so until more results are in on it.
That's all right. My, my thought was not to move to, to join it, but to talk about what we might do while we're waiting during the period that you're talking about, so.
Yeah, I think council's got enough things to do of their own without worrying about northern Colorado cities.
But it sounds like the wait, the wait, this is the wait-and-see approach, that, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'm hearing, your fellow council members.
Okay, I just, I wasn't just sure if we needed to verify that, so we're okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Subcategory of it depends.
Taylor?
Did you hear? I'm, I'm finished, thank you. Oh, sorry. Since our last formal meeting, we had an open house at Alex Hand Apartment Units, and they, they're very nice units, so it was a nice reception, an open house they had there. The neighborhood is very pleased by the turnout that came with Nanette Capons and its 10th anniversary celebration. South Suburban has created a five-year planting plan, and they planted a bunch of trees on that anniversary date, and will continue for the next four years planting trees to beautify that park. And I was pleased with the turnout that occurred in this room on accessory dwelling units. It was primarily people from Littleton and from Sheridan who were here, but I thought it was a very informative meeting, and we'll probably be hearing more about it as time goes on.
And this was put on by the Denver Regional Council governments?
Put on by Denver Regional Council governments, and the chief planner from the City of Arvada was also part of the presentation. On October 16, Dr. Cog is hosting an elected official's workshop on infill development and redevelopment. And if you're interested in, in that, of course, we are an infill and redevelopment city. I think it'd be an interesting topic to listen to. I believe it starts at 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning at their offices downtown. On October 28, Dr. Cog's short course will occur on Metrovision. People are always saying, well, what's Metrovision? If you want to find out as an elected official what Metrovision is, that's what the workshop's designed to do on the 28th of October. Starting September 21, the Front Range Travel Count Survey got underway. If you are one of the people that's chosen, or one of your constituents happens to be, and you're asked about it, it is a survey that is legitimate. It's covering people's travel from the Wyoming border to Pueblo. And it is a telephone survey that's done randomly. And the, all the, the four councils of governments and RTD and the state are participating in its funding, state being CDOT.
And councilman, just to add, that that's important for future transportation, planning of future transportation projects. And we've advised the, a lot of the people who handle the phones here, if, because people may call, sometimes we get calls and people ask if something's legitimate. So we are, our frontline people are prepared to tell people if they inquire about that, that this is a very important survey done for long-term transportation planning.
And it also translates, translates into funding for them as well.
Yes, sir.
I got word, and Debbie, you may want to speak to this also, that the Colorado Water Conservation Board is cutting the shrubs and trees out of the bottom of the Platte River. They're doing it in, in segments, and it start, it, they will not do anything in South Platte Park, but it would be starting north of South Platte Park. Right now, they're working north of us, north of our city, but will soon be inside our city limits, cutting out all the shrubs and trees in the bottom of the river. So in case somebody asks you, that's what's going on. The Colorado Water Conservation Board is mandated by the federal government to do that, by the Corps of Engineers. I will have next meeting, I intended for this one, but frankly, just forgot about it, information on the National League of Cities Prescription Drug Program and, because Doug had asked about getting some information about that. I have it all together. I just haven't got it prepared, so I'll have it for the next meeting. And that's all.
John?
Nothing this evening, thanks.
A couple things, kind of to echo on what Jim's saying. The reason that they are doing that is to improve the quality of the river. It's a lot of willows that get down there, and when you get any kind of water flow through there, a lot of debris and stuff gets caught up in those things, and it helps to improve the entire habitat of the river. So they, I think it hap, they did it a couple years ago, too. It's pretty scarring when they're doing it, but it, it is the intent- The intention is to improve it. South Platte Working Group, we had discussed during the budget hearings that the South Platte Working Group may have opportunity to look at some additional projects beyond what we had anticipated with our legacy program. The good news is that information back from Great Outdoors Colorado, which is the Colorado Lottery Legacy Granting Program, is that we actually... The South Platte Working Group are one of the most efficient groups that they work with. We have completed, I think, in the neighborhood of eight or nine projects and some of them substantial. And we probably, within the next month and a half, will have another two or three completed. So by the end of this year, we should have close to a dozen completed. And there are other groups who have... Two other major groups have... One has completed nothing and the other one has only completed one. So we're kind of setting an example there with a way to, you know, the structure that we have with that group to be able to do this efficiently and effectively and successfully. The seven projects we came up with at the end of the meeting last week, I think three of them and possibly fourth one are in Littleton. And we're going to be evaluating those, bringing some more additional information back to the South Platte Working Group next month, and then we'll make some decisions there about which ones we do proceed with. So once those decisions are made, then I'll bring that information back to council. But it's all great news and it's all good projects, so...
And Debbie, I think the reason... Excuse me for interrupting, but I think the reason why this group has done so well is for the very reason that you guys get along with each other and cooperate with each other, all the entities. It's just like there's no borders out there when you're talking about these projects and that's the only way they can make this work. And it's working successfully because of that idea.
And it is. And it's actually a concept that's now duplicated into the Cherry Creek Basin and the Highline Canal. And yeah, it's one of the most functional groups I've seen. The council had asked me to liaison to the South Platte Park and with South Suburban on the selection and kind of, you know, decision-making regarding the interpretive signage for the depiction of the 1954 flood?
Sixty-five.
Fifty-five?
Sixty-five flood.
Flood. And so we have interviewed the three candidates who were... Made the cut for the RFP and selected one of those. They're being notified that our next step is to get together as a group, create our criteria and then meet with the design group and have them begin to execute some planning. So we're moving forward on that and it looks like we anticipate conclusion of that in 2010 and should start seeing some things probably mid-winter, some design plans and stuff. So that's moving along nicely. That's all I have.
Joe? Charlie, this for you. On Broadway east of the high school, down past the stadium... When was the last time we did that asphalt through there? Do you have any idea? Because I've had some people that were calling me and asking if the city was going to work on this side now that you got done with the other side.
I can remember.
Yeah. Do we have anything planned on the east side?
Yes.
And how far in the future?
It's not done next year. I'd be surprised.
Okay.
Very high.
All right. Thank you. That's it.
Charlie's answer to that question, Joe, was it's very high on the list.
Yeah. I would guess it was probably when Ralph Shumpf was constructed and we tore... They tore down the Baptist retreat.
And what... Just for the television audience, what Mr. Tahil's talking about is this year, we completely rebuilt Powers Avenue north of Littleton High School. And we are aware that that street's... That Littleton Boulevard, going down that section is in bad shape and it is very, very high on the priority list.
Well, last Friday, I was inducted into the Colorado Broadcasting Hall of Fame. And as there were 179 people there, I didn't get around to saying thanks to everyone. Some Littleton citizens there that included John Sauer, Mayor Doug Clark, Jerry Hill, Jack Randall, David Hickson, Councilman Joe Tahil, David Randall and Bevan Arch Andrews. The University of Colorado had one table, the Denver Broncos had one table, KO Radio had one table, Channel 9 had one table. And because of my nieces and nephews flying in from five states, my brother from San Diego and some of my sons and daughters, I had three tables.
The Mulvey clan.
It cost money. It was a wonderful day. I was very honored and thanks to all who attended. Last night, I attended, and I'll give you an update on that, I attended the museum board monthly meeting. And of course, this Saturday is the Harvest Festival. Whether it snows or rains or whatever, they'll be selling pumpkins and you can have pumpkins and work out in the fields if you want to, Jerry. And they have pumpkins and they have pumpkin pie with all that sort of thing and rides. And it's always been a very big day at the museum. They... What am I going to say something about what they're doing over there? September monthly visitation was 9,171 at the museum, which is up from 8,953 in 2008. And for the year, total attendance is 85,968, up 10% from 78,000 in 2008. Do we have anything else tonight? John?
Yes, a couple items. Number one, we were scheduled to continue the city manager's performance review this evening. I think, given the absence of the mayor, we moved that to next week following our study session. I will also be requesting an executive session on another issue next week. So I guess we need to decide that first, if everybody's in agreement to move the city manager's review to follow the meeting next week, continuation of that.
I am.
Me.
Okay. Given that, I move that council go into an executive session following the regular meeting pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section 24.6, 402.4B and 24.6, 402.4E, to receive legal advice, to give instruction to negotiators and get advice regarding improvements to Real Grand Avenue.
And then, counsel, if you could also add, could we have a really brief discussion on the status of the Lowry litigation? We could add that to legal advice.
And to discuss litigation on the Lowry landfill issue.
Second.
Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor. The motion's approved.
How do we close this out, Jim?
Oh, go ahead.
Who's supposed to be in the executive session, please?
Who?
That'll be the city council, the city manager, the city attorney, Public Works Director, Charlie Bloston. Anybody else need to be in that? Phil?
I'll let Phil off the hook on this one.
Phil might as well be there.
All right. And you might just, for the television audience, council will not be back in session after this.
We're telling them that. Thank you. We won't wait back.
Are we adjourned?